We're in business. Good job, Scott. We're good. Smack a gal.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our brave men and women fighting all over the world for democracy and freedom. Thank you. Colleen?
The meeting tonight is for the conduct of town business by the town board. The public is invited to participate at the items marked on the agenda, public comment. During that segment of the meeting, if you have a question or comment for the supervisor, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please state your full name and limit your remarks to three minutes. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation.
Thank you very much, Colleen.
You're welcome.
So, we'll start off the meeting today with the public hearing on the 2019 preliminary budget, October 22, 2018, 7-03. Any questions? This is a public hearing. If you have any questions on the budget, please step up to the microphone, state your name and your question, and Chris Wilco would answer your question. Go ahead. James, come on up.
I apologize. I have more than one question. Could you, for the viewing audience, briefly go over the process? You've come up with a preliminary budget. You have a public hearing, and then what happens?
Sure. Basically, all the board members are notified through email. Myself, Budget Director, Chris Wilco, Councilman Corcoran. We sit down and we interview each of the department heads. That's the tentative. So, we go through there what they would like to see and what they would like to see in their budget. We look it over. And then we look at the final number. And the final number, of course, isn't going to be below the caps. Then, we again look at it, and we determine through the board, in email, myself and Councilman Corcoran, what things that we could eliminate. And, once we do that, and we could get to a satisfied number where the budget is within the cap or below the cap, and then we go, once we do that, then we ask the department heads to come back, and we go over and saying, you know, instead of, like, for instance, the police department, they put in for two cars. We knocked it down to one car, and that was a $40,000 savings. We went through the emails through the board. Some disagreed, some agreed. We decided also to put one of the cars back into service, so this way, one of the SRO people would be able to have a car. So, we have three offices in all three schools, and each officer needs a car in case of an emergency. So, that's the process, basically. And we come now to the process where it's the public hearing. Everything's on the website, as I indicated to you. And here we are at the public hearing.
And after the public hearing, you close the public hearing, and then you take a vote on it at some point in the future?
Yeah. Actually, during, after we close the public hearing, we'll change the budget according to the second step, where we told people they couldn't have what they wanted, and the preliminary would become the final.
And when you vote on this, will this be voted on after the December referendum on Tom Back, or is that done?
No, nothing to do with Tom Back. No. This is the budget for 2019 for all the department heads to go by.
Okay.
This has to go up to Albany, I mean, up to the county. So, our county clerk could tell them exactly what our, the number is that we need. And then they would do all their number figuring and stuff, and then they would do the tax roll, and this way you'll get your taxes in January.
Okay. And then, so the Tom Back is not part of the budget?
That's a way. That's not part of the budget.
Okay. The... Was there any money set aside in the budget dealing with the proposal for the senior recreation center?
No.
No, that's outside the budget. Okay.
No. If you looked at the budget, you would have saw that.
Well, just because I don't see it doesn't mean it's not there, and I might have missed it. That's why I asked.
No, everything's upfront, James. This is the budget for the town of Marlborough for 2019. Everything that the taxpayers' money is involved is in this budget. There's no hidden agendas here.
No, I know that, but sometimes it's not...
I'm just clarifying.
Yes. It's, not everybody reads a budget and understands exactly what's in what.
I understand that, or else the place would be packed.
And one of the things that had come out in dealing with the transfer station was that there was, I think, $5,000 in that budget for fuel oil for, I think, probably the building in the back, which is the highway department. And then there was some other money that was set aside to do some monitoring of the dump.
We took that out.
That's been taken out of their budget. Okay. That's what I wanted to...
That's been taken out in line item for the landfill.
It's not out of the budget.
No, no, but it's out of that. It's where it should be now.
Yep. Absolutely.
Are there any highlights in the budget that you would like to tell the audience?
There are no highlights, but I would say one thing, that the process went smooth, thanks to our Budget Director, who's been doing this quite for a long time. So, and the, with the board and myself and Councilman Corcoran, I think it went very smooth. I'm very happy with the outcome. It's below the cap, and we're striving to get below the cap more than last year, and we accomplished that.
I'd like to thank the board for all their hard work on what is not necessarily the most exciting thing to be working on, but certainly very important to the public. So, I'd like to thank you all for your efforts in working out the budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, James. See no other hands? Oh, somebody's just getting up. Mr. Walters?
I notice there's at least two decreases in personal services. Supervisor, 21,000-plus, and the town clerk, 1,800-plus. Why are those two decreases?
Okay, yeah. Well, do you want to answer that? I can answer that.
Because you can answer that.
So, but thank you for that. So, during our audit, we found out that we weren't doing something according to New York State or the audit. And that was with the water department, the water billing. My secretary was spending enormous amount of time. The Budget Director was spending some time, and also the county clerks, the town clerks been spending time. So, what they say is to take that out and put it in the water district fund, which made sense. So, that's what we did. We figure around 30,000, Chris? Something like that? Yeah. So, that was the reason for the reduction there, because we just took it from one place and put it in another place. You know all about that, Ralph.
I noticed the salaries for youth programs went up 16,000-plus.
Yep.
Why is there a significant increase there?
Well, last year, in order to get council people, we had to raise the rates. And when we did that, we also raised the rate per person from, I think it was $95 to $125. So, we lost quite a bit. So, that's the reason for that. So, we were thinking, when we interviewed the bill and the counselor for that, we decided that maybe we would open up to non-residents to try to recoup some of that money. Kim Palmero.
I know we're providing from the police department a couple more officers down at the school. I'm looking at the revenues. What code is that revenue coming in from the school district?
For the SROs, the two SROs?
Yeah, the two that...
It's actually an agreement with the town. I don't know where...
The account code's 2260. It might not be in the budget that you're looking at.
Okay, I see it.
We're going to add it.
Chris? You've got 38,000 in there. There's 38,000?
Yes.
And that covers, I believe there's three.
One is covered by the municipal agreement we have with the school to be in this building. And that's the original one at the high school. The other two...
I thought there was one added last...
We added two.
For the last school year, and two that went on this school year.
There's a total of three.
There's a total of three. One is per the municipal agreement that we have at the high school. That was the agreement we had to come to here. The other two were asked, and we brought up an agreement. And they, the town, the school pays for those two SROs.
It was my understanding that originally it was a dare officer and one SRO.
Uh, no, it actually was an SRO and a crossing guard.
What about the dare officer?
Dare officer is, we actually have a fund for the dare officer, and I don't know where his salary comes out, if it comes out of the police, or is he one of the... Yeah, he's a police. So, he's one of the SROs, isn't he?
He does fill in.
Yeah.
I mean, the dare officer and the original SRO comes out of the police department budget. That's our responsibility. The two new part-time SROs that they hire are on that line.
That's from the school.
But it was my understanding from school district meetings that before the school ended in June, another SRO was added at that point, and then there were going to be two more added this past September.
No, Ralph. There's overall...
One each school.
Three SROs, one for each school. Two of them are paid through the school to the town.
And can you tell me what the fund balances for the A Fund and the Highway Fund as of December 17?
I don't have it in front of me, but it was high 600,000 for the general fund.
How much?
High 600,000.
600.
High 600.
It's a high 600.
660 and 900.
Yeah.
660 and 900, I think, was around.
And we're only using 75,000 on the A Fund. We're not using any part towards the highway?
No.
And why not?
Because, Mr. Appeler, we reduced his paving of roads by 80,000. He's using a lot of his fund balance to pave roads for next year. And also, he is taking out of his fund balance the remainder of amount, certain amount for his new truck. It's going to come out of the 200,000 line item for the machinery, plus he has to take some money out of his fund balance for the remainder for that truck.
So, in other words, you have not appropriated that for fund balance to be used for his truck or paving. You're going to have to raise your budget as the time goes on.
No, he's going to take that out of the fund balance.
Yeah, but still, you have to budget for those items. And therefore, you should have budgeted for the full truck and budgeted an amount coming out of fund balance.
You can, yeah.
That's the proper way of doing it.
Well, you can do that.
You could do that, but then you're not really using your fund balance.
Yes, you are. You're appropriating fund balance.
You say you put it in the budget, but you take it out of the fund balance.
Yeah, but if I put it in the budget, then I'm over on my tax.
No, it doesn't have any...
Yeah, but then...
If you look at page 13 of your budget, and the less unexpended balance, you would increase the budget appropriation, and you'd put an amount into less unexpended balance of that same amount.
It's the same thing we were going to do for the car for Tom? Okay, so that's, it doesn't, it doesn't do anything to the overall budget or anything to do with the cap. We could do that, Ralph.
It wouldn't have any effect on your cap. You're still going to raise the same amount of taxes.
I understand.
But you're raising the total budget, and you're raising the amount that's being appropriated from fund balance.
I got that.
So, even though you filled in the final column on the budget that you handed out, that is not really the final budget.
No.
But to do what you're saying, Ralph, in order to actually use the fund balance?
They're choosing it.
No. If we actually want to actually use the fund balance, we'd actually have to reduce his equipment line by $100,000. Yes, because if I tax, let's just say his equipment was 285, which I think that's what it is.
That's what it is.
If I tax the taxpayer 285,000, correct, and then we say, okay, but we're going to use 85,000 out of the fund balance, and we're going to lessen it off the top, right? We're still collecting 285,000 from the taxpayers that year for that line. Then, he's going to take 85,000 out of his fund balance, yes, but that extra 85,000 that I just taxed the taxpayer for is going to go back into his fund balance. So, technically, we never used any of his fund balance, if you understand that. So, the only way to actually use fund balance is to reduce his line to 100,000 and say, now we're going to put 80, or 85,000, if you want to put there, and then we're actually using the fund balance.
You leave the 285 in. You want to use 100,000 of fund balance. You put it in the unexpended column.
I understand that.
And you only bring in 185 from the taxpayers.
But you don't, because you taxed the taxpayers 285.
No, you're not.
Chris says...
You went through this.
It's very obvious that some of the board members need to go to a budget workshop.
We had this meeting. We had a meeting about this. And this is what we were, this is what we were talking about.
I've been doing municipal budgets for 40 years, and that's not the way you're doing it.
Trust me, we talked about this for over an hour. This was exactly the conversation we had for over an hour. All right, okay. Thank you for your comment, Ralph.
So, this is something we could take under consideration to see if we could do that.
Yeah, we talked about it. We've talked about it some more.
Thank you, Ralph. Mark?
This is a question for Chris. Maybe you could just tell me, for the public always wants to know if they have a $150,000 house, how much they're going to pay extra?
Yeah, I got that.
And 200,000, 300, whatever.
So, after I close the public hearing, then I'll make changes to preliminary budget, and then I'll specify how much it would cost for somebody with $200,000 home or up to $400,000 home.
You'll have that tonight or next meeting?
150,000 right after.
Oh, okay. All right.
If you have any questions on the budget, please.
No, that's fine. To get back to the unexpended balance, after you spend the 75,000, appropriate that, how much is going to be left? Is it about 600?
It's in the high 6. It's 680, something like that.
In general?
Yes. Yeah.
And about 900 in highway?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Mickey?
Good evening. Mickey Simonowski from Marlborough. It's been a long time since I've looked at a town budget, but I did have just a couple of questions. Under elections, you don't have anything budgeted. Don't we have yearly expenses for election costs?
No, the county puts that up now.
Oh, really? That's good for us.
Yeah. That's changed quite a few years ago.
And under traffic control, is, I just want to define what traffic control is. Is that only the crossing guards, or is that traffic control for the parks for special events? Because you have 45,000.
Is that in the police budget item?
It's underneath, it's police, and then it lists traffic control, and then it lists fire inspector.
It's primary use for traffic signs.
For traffic signs? Oh, okay. So, it has nothing to do with personnel?
No, no personnel in that line.
And you answered the question about the youth programs. That's good. So, is the budget actually increased to give more programs as well for youth? I mean, how much is actually in...
No, actually, everything stayed status quo. It was just that we ran into a budget problem as far as over, you know, not taking in as much revenue as we anticipated. Because of what I speculated and what I was told about the different council people raising their hourly rate, we had to raise it substantial, you know, because we weren't getting to fill in those positions. We were pretty low to begin with, but then, you know, and because of that, we raised it from 95 to 125 per person to join the camp.
For the tuition for the camp. Got it. Under employee benefits, I see everything went down by 3.18%. If I'm reading this correctly. So, is that because you've lost employees, or did you just have better negotiations for all the insurance that workers count?
We have a lot younger people.
So, there's not as many people retiring?
On the highway department and the police department.
Your hires are contributing.
Yeah, that's the reason. And so, everything goes down there, you know, the benefits if they're not married and stuff like that.
Amen on that one, huh? So, I don't, so, the total for culture and recreation is $11,000. Just what does that cover? Which kind of programs is that for?
The recreation?
Under total economic and opportunity, culture, recreation park, $11,000. Is that the summer camp program, other than personnel?
I think that's also to do with, is that under the concert thing?
I think she's looking at 7110, correct?
Yes.
That's Tom Schroeder, the park supervisor. That's his salary.
Oh, salary, okay. So, I'm just, under celebrations, then, is that the, I'm just trying to figure out how we're paying for the concerts, which are basically free, but...
Yeah, the concerts are budget every year at $4,000 for the budget.
Or under the 7270. Can you see that underneath?
Okay, that's the band concerts.
Yeah.
So, the youth programs, the personnel services, that's for counselors only.
Yes.
There's nothing needed for equipment for them. And so, I guess I'm kind of wondering, like, is there money allocated for the bounty festival and the community day for...
There is.
So, I'm just trying to find out where that is here.
Oh, that is under celebrations.
Celebrations.
That's part of it.
Celebrations.
So, you always do account for help for the bounty festival as well?
Yeah. Yeah. We, I think we give $400 for the bouncy house and a few other things.
She reimburses that, though, right? They reimburse that money. They do that, right?
We usually give them 400 bucks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Anybody else? Larry, you're wondering what happened to your raise? Okay, going once, going twice, going three times. I need a motion to close the public hearing on the 2019 preliminary budget.
All motion.
Need a second? You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? None being said. So, moved. So, these are the changes. As far as the expenses on 1420.400A, we went from 42,000 to 32,000, which is a negative 10. Town clerk, 1410.100A, we went to 86,945 to 83,445. That's minus 3,500. A $500 increase for the website individual, 4,000 decrease to the water payroll. And the police, 3120. 100A, went from 1,301,209 to 1,69,209. 38,000 SRO added. Police, 3120.200A, went from 112,205 to 76,205, which is a decrease for one car was minus 36,000. Dispatcher, 1650.100A, 228,692. It went to that, to 220,946, minus 7,746, decrease full-time position. Dispatcher, 1650.400A, 3,402,1800, a minus 1600, decrease full-time position. Building inspector, from 15,000 to 0, minus 15,000, decrease in the car. Highway department, 15110.00DA, 447,000. It went down to 367,000, minus 80,000 decrease in road paving. Water, 8310.100SW, 161,255. That went up to 189,0055, an increase of 27,800, increase from salary water section TC and BO. Maroon Fire, 3410.400SFM1, that went from 599,464 to 641,300. So, that was an increase of 41,836. Milton Fire, 3410.400SFT2, went from 570,500 to 583,000, increase of 12,500. And that was, both of the fire companies submitted their budget. On the revenue side, camp, 2025.000A, went from 29,000 to 34,000, 5,000 adding out of town, out of town campers. So, that's what I was talking, that we hope we get some out-of-residents to join us with the camp.
Just to clarify too, for a while, right, out-of-residence is going to have a higher rate than in residence.
Yeah. So, that's where we hopefully will make up some of the deficit. SRO, 2260.000A, from 0 to 38,000. That's the SRO was added to the Marlborough school. Fuel tank, 2389.00A, 0 to 25,000, 25,000 income from school. The cell tower, 2414.000SW, 0 to 11,820. That's income from the Verizon, the use of the cell tower. And I think after February, that will increase to around 18 or 20,000. Other, deleted well monitoring from recycling/transfer, added well monitoring, online landfill post-close, 8161.400A. Reduced fund and unexpected balance from 90,000 to 75,000. So, in your question mark, household SS value for 400,000 house, a rate of 8.111 dollars tax, 3244. That was in '18. In 2019, for a 400,000 home, it's going to be 8.22, 3288 dollars taxed. That's an increase of 44. If you have a 300,000 home, the rate is 8.22, and that's 33. If you have a 250,000 home, the rate is 8.22, that would be 2750. And if you have a 200,000 home, that would be the same rate, 8.22, would be 22. And SS value of 150,000 home, you'd be paying 16.50. So, I had this hearing. If you want to copy more, you order it.
Can I make a motion that, I can't believe I'm going to say this, but I do agree with Ralph. The more I keep thinking about this, what we definitely know is he's going to use 85,000 from his fund balance, but we... But we gotta get the actual number he wants to use for roads. So if he is gonna use road, two hundred thousand or so, we should get that number and add it to the...
Yeah, it has to be even amount for it not to increase the tax.
Well, I mean, like, I think, I keep putting this in my head and thinking, because we had like an hour meeting on this exact subject. But he's actually right, because then next year, that's gonna come off the budget, right? And then that fund balance is gone. And so it is, that is accurate, it'll wash.
Yeah, as long as it's...
So we just gotta, I wanna make a motion, or I don't know if we have to even do it, just that we actually make sure that we get the exact number from him on the roads.
I don't think we need a motion.
You don't need a motion.
I think we could do that through the budget.
But we can put it in the budget and approve it on the final.
Because we have a lot of our final stuff almost finalized, so I just wanna make sure that gets into the final. Ralph is accurate on that. Thank you.
Yes, Ralph?
Every year, I bring up the same topic. The Milton and Marlboro Fire District budgets are not part of the town. They each have their own public hearings. You should only act as the collecting agent for the taxes. So you shouldn't even bring up the two Fire District budgets. They each have to have their own public hearing, and it's submitted so that it gets put on the tax bills. The town collects the money and in turn pays the full amount, whatever that budgeted amount is, to the Fire Districts. The town has no say in those budgets, other than if the town board members want to go to the Fire Districts to their public hearing.
I understand, Ralph. We do it as a curse.
I've heard you do it before.
We just...
But it shouldn't even be mentioned.
We don't have anything to do it. We don't get, you know, we just put it in our taxes. What, it's up to each Fire Department. We understand that. We, I get it from my office. It tells me how much they need, the increase, and we just, as a courtesy to the taxpayers of Marlboro, just say what it is.
No, but again...
I know I don't have to.
It sounds like the town board is acting on the two Fire District budgets, the way it's written.
We know that.
But it shouldn't even be brought up.
I disagree, but that's okay.
I think it's a courtesy of just telling people.
Moving right on? So we're good? Do we have to make a motion for these changes? I think so.
But it's just that it's...
I think so. Our budget director...
He's not changing it either.
I think we usually do, don't we, Chris?
Was it the final budget? You're voting to change, you're gonna...
The final, you'll...
Yeah, okay, so we're good.
We're gonna vote on the final, those changes will be in there.
Yes, yes, okay. Just making sure, checking it out.
You just keep it in warm, so...
You don't want, I'm saving you.
Yeah, right.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks Scott, thanks board members. Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Opposed? Okay. Motion to approve minutes from the September twenty-four, twenty-eighteen town board meeting.
Make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None being said, motion carried. Motion to approve minutes from the September twenty-four, twenty-eighteen public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion to approve the minutes from the October fifth, twenty-eighteen special meeting.
I'm waiting for motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None being said, motion carried. Authorized payment of bills in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. Motion to pay the bills, gentlemen?
Yes, make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Any presentations tonight? None being had, moving on.
Larry wants to speak.
Larry, you got one.
Larry, how are you, sir?
Gentlemen, I have a petition as to people want to keep the recycling center open. I would like to hand that I have a hundred and thirty-two signatures onto it. Also, at this time, I'd like to thank D L Apple for fixing up the transfer station, updated the canning wall, eliminated the hazard. We also have another problem when they amended the brush permit. They put ten dollars a truckload. I think it should be ten dollars a pickup load. There's quite a difference.
I thought we did that, pick-up load.
Pardon?
Think we said that, pickup truck.
We said that.
It doesn't say it in the notice that we got. It says ten dollars a truckload.
So what happens? You got tractor trailer coming up?
It could be a dump truck. It could be.
But we don't have, has that happened?
Not yet, but...
Okay, so the interpretation should be have, you know, pickup truck.
Pickup truck with a regular...
Right, this should be amended.
So that you should tell your guys, pickup truck. Anything more than that, you know, game is over.
What is it? They can't dump there if it's more than a pickup truck, right?
Well...
We eliminated that.
Somebody comes up with a dump truck with...
You can't really stop them, because the permit says a truckload, so...
I know, we'll change it to pickup.
Pickup truck, yeah.
Okay.
But I just wanted to point that out now. Even after we change the definition to a pickup truck, we don't allow big dump trucks to dump brush there anymore. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have to, like, define what the size of a truck is, like...
I don't know.
I'm getting technical here, but do we have to actually do that, so people don't get around the...
We don't have, we don't have a problem yet. We don't have, people are not coming...
He's participating.
Yeah, I know you're anticipating, so...
I'm just trying to address it, so we don't have a problem.
I know, but...
Someone comes in, they raise the issue.
Okay, but we don't really have the issue now, yes. So you should enforce it. Somebody comes in there with a tractor trailer full of brush, we're not taking it, so...
Or a pickup or dump truck.
Or a dump truck, I guess. I mean, yeah, supposed to be a...
It's supposed to be a dump truck. Supposed to be like a regular pickup truck, right?
Yes. We can clarify that, Larry, but...
Okay, all right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Larry.
Yep.
Wasn't it saying on the permit? Is that what he's...
I'm not, no, on our, on our list of fees, I think it maybe should say pickup truckload only. That's something we'll do for the January, when we change all the fees, okay? Well, so Larry, I just speak for the board, I guess. I mean, nobody's thinking about closing the transfer station at this point, so I appreciate the signatures, and I know it's a valuable asset for a lot of people in town, so...
Yes, people are very concerned.
I understand that, yeah, mhm, so...
Thank you, Larry.
So where, can I ask you a question, Larry? I'm sorry. Where did the concern come from, though? Like, was it because you were having, we were having meetings about it, about different options?
You said you call up some different people, and they say that you have to pay garbage once a month.
Right.
And you say that if you're gonna have garbage to pick up, we're gonna have to pay monthly choice, or pay it a month.
Right.
All right.
Yeah.
Same thing, you get the containment down on the road, the garbage, and you pick them up.
Right.
Means they have to show them the driveway, and then it's no...
Right. All right, yeah, that's what I figured, because there's been a lot of talk about meetings and different options we were looking at, right?
Yep.
So, that's...
Nothing's been decided yet, so...
Good, thank you.
No districts yet there, Larry? Far from it. Okay, let's go right to the reports. So, supervisor report for October. But... Comments on the agenda, I'm sorry. Come on up, Nick. Sorry about that.
That's okay. It might not be appropriate to even ask it then, right now, but about the wording for the Resolution Seventy-Six. I just had a question on the ruling. Do you want me to bring that up just before you vote on it? Or do you want me to talk about it now?
You can talk about it now, if you like. Or you can talk about it when it comes up. It's up to you.
Go ahead, do it.
You can do it.
All right. I know, because I was one of the people who circulated the petitions to ask for the permissive referendum. This, the wording on this, should the Marlboro Town Board convey title to the so-called Tomvac building? And then it goes on, pursuant to a contract of sale establishing a sale price of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So it's asking if you should convey title. But that's not the wording that was on the specific petition. So I'm wondering if this is actually in accordance with what the people wanted. Because the wording on the petition was, should the property known as Tomvac be sold? And it was gonna be a simple yes or no answer. And this one is specifically asking about this contract of sale, if I'm reading this resolution correctly.
You can't have a petition for just yes or no. It has to be for what we voted on. Has to be, this is what we voted on. So if that's the case, your petition is wrong, which means that's invalid. Because you have to have a petition that says you're doing what we voted on, which is this is what we voted on, these words.
Well, what was, what was put up to the public was that this parcel was going to be sold. And the question on the petition was, should it be sold?
But that, but you can't just, but Mickey, you don't, you know as well as anybody. The petition is based on the resolution we passed for the supervisor to sign a contract. It's not a simple yes or no, do you sell the building or not? It's what we passed. That's the only thing you could petition. You have to petition, it's a subject to permissive referendum, what we actually voted on. You can't just go out and get a petition and say, do you want to sell Tomvac or not? That's, that's not what we voted on. We voted on...
Well, you are, you did vote on selling the Tomvac.
No, we did, but through a resolution with these words.
All right.
Actually, we're told no years ago, I believe.
I mean, if we could've done that, we would've done that four years ago.
Hey, we were gonna do a resolution just to say, hey, would it be any, will we not run into this? When someone's trying to buy it, and we told no.
But we didn't have a price, so we didn't have anything, so we said no. You have to wait till...
You have to wait till you have a price.
So you clarified that, and I thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's just see what the actual wording on here says. Sell the property located at fifteen-twenty-nine U. To be honest with you, I would have Ron question this petition, because it's not actually accurate to what we actually voted on.
I mean, you know, are we just splitting hairs or what is it?
Well, I mean, I didn't bring it up.
It's a sale of Tomvac.
It says to sell the property located on fifteen-twenty-nine U, tax act number, on the town of Marlboro, commonly known as a Tomvac property, be sold by the town of Marlboro. But this is what we voted on, is what we have in this resolution tonight is what we, what Ron has basically taken right out of the resolution that we passed.
So, but what is the difference, man?
I don't know.
Mickey's asking.
You are following the good advice, I understand that. I just have a simple question as to whether it helps to draw the, for the resolution.
But I'm saying, you don't have in your petition pursuant of contract of sale, which is subject, you don't have that. You just have...
Well, there are absolutely no guidelines in here on how the petition has to be written, so...
Well, there are guidelines, Mickey, there actually are. There actually are guidelines.
But I think both...
But I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying...
I think we're fine, just accepting.
But I'm just saying, if the wording is off, we should just have them double-check this petition. But the wording that we actually have in here is from Ron, right? Which was from the actual resolution.
But Ron did the resolution.
So, I mean, she is correct, it doesn't have that in here.
Yeah, it's a sale of, it has, doesn't have a problem, does anybody else have a problem?
But we have to make sure, because do people think that this petition says yes or no? Because we did also find this out from Ron, if it was a no, we still can sell it. Because the con, because what we're actually, I'm just saying, because that's what, I think what Mickey was getting at, there is a difference in wording here. This says, should it be sold by the town of Marlboro? That's a yes or no answer.
Well, the intent of the people who were signing the petition was...
No, I get that, Mickey, a hundred percent.
Yeah, I think, I think everybody understands what we're doing.
But we're actually, but, but the actual thing that we are actually, that we voted on was to, of course, to sell Tomvac, but it was for him, for the supervisor, to sign the contract, right? And, and that's why it says pursuant of the contract of sale. Because that means we're letting the supervisor, the board has said yes, let the supervisor sign that contract. I just hope that people understand, which, this petition isn't actually saying that. That they understand that technically, not saying that it would happen, but technically, even if it was a no, overall, that the town board could still sell Tomvac, still put it back out for sale, I should say. Correct. I just want people to understand that, that's all.
If there was a no, yeah, we'd have to go through the same process, so...
I mean, not to say we would do that, but I'm just saying that would be subject to the board to do that. But there is a difference there, I mean...
Yeah, right. Splitting hairs a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't bring it up.
I know you didn't. You're good, Mickey? Okay.
Well, I actually think we still should have Ron look at that. I would ask Ron to look at that.
That would be a board to say, you want me to...
Well, God make a motion to have Ron look at that petition to make sure it is accurate to what the actual...
If it's not accurate, then would they have to go get another petition? Is that what's gonna happen?
Yeah, they would have to just go...
Wait again?
It wouldn't be, because we're past the days already.
So they wouldn't be able to get a petition?
I'm just saying, I think we should have Ron look at that.
Councilman incorporated...
I make a motion that we have Ron look at that petition, just to make sure. I want to make sure, because if we go forward, that it's actually accurate when they do vote. You know, they have to vote, let's make it accurate. Let's not have any...
Well, the only thing I'm concerned about is if it isn't accurate, and they vote, and then that's not the right petition, and then somebody can come out and challenge the petition.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And then we go through a whole election, and the actual petition is not valid.
And we have to go through another election.
No, we wouldn't, because it's past the time then.
No, but the point is, that's the point, let's make it sure. I mean, we could pass, we have to pass tonight, because that's accurate. But they have to make, we have to make sure that's accurate, which we probably should've done right off the bat, to be honest with you. Our legal...
Well, we didn't, we didn't raise the petition. That wasn't a town board activity.
But, I mean, yeah, they didn't raise it, but our attorney should still look it over to verify it's accurate to what we're voting on.
Oh, he had to look at it, so she had to verify their signatures.
So...
My only question was if the correct wording, so if your counsel has already said that this is the wording that you did, then you've already done this bill. I just ask if it was correct wording.
I'm just saying, we should have our attorney look at it.
Well, do I have a second on that?
I don't see why you should spend more money on an attorney if he's already written this. I just ask if it was correct wording.
Because let's just say this passes, let's just say someone that doesn't want it to sell is gonna bring up, well, that was the wrong petition, and we want another one.
You can go both ways.
So we have to do another election. So that's why I want to make sure it's accurate right now.
Well, then why don't you just postpone this resolution until you get...
Well, because we know our resolution, our resolution's correct. So I don't want to, because we postponed it, then the election gets changed. We don't want to change the, we want to get it done. We have, we only have X amount of days, right, Mickey? Sixty to seventy-five days, so we're, we have to do this in a certain amount of time.
I believe, I believe that a special election has all by the supervisor, so I believe...
It's sixty to seventy-five days from the day we pass the sale. I mean, that, that's it. I mean, from the day you gave the petition.
I guess I have a different municipal law than you guys did, because...
Well, that's what...
That's why...
I'm going by what our attorney told us.
I'm going by general law, that, you know...
General law, county.
Well, the municipal law that I read said that it's a stretch, it's a stretch of the town supervisor, that if you had to do the next general election, the next biennial, biennial election, or a special election called for by the town supervisor.
Yeah, this is a special election, and I must've read this thing about a couple, two or three times during each meeting, stating the times and what, you know, what had...
That's what I said, so you read, you read what is in town code.
There was a timeframe, but...
So, and you said a date, so...
I'll, I'll second Scott's motion. I just want the lawyer to look at it.
I got a second.
I want the vote to be just...
All in favor?
I think it's gotta be right, so I'm, the way it's gonna, it's gotta be right, period.
So, okay, we go to, I'll ask Ron's part.
Thank you, Phil.
Have two opposed, three in favor? I think it's gonna be a wash, probably, but we'll see.
I, I look, I want it to go to vote, trust me. If the people want this, I want it to go to vote. I just want to make sure it's right.
I don't have a problem with that seventh fourth, if somebody comes up.
I, I just want to make sure it's right, that's all.
So, so basically, and Scott asks this question because I think Mark asked the question to Scott, you know, if this went down as a no vote, could we still, could the three... You know, if this went down as a no vote, could we still, could the three board members still want to sell it? Because the vote is on the contract for the three hundred and eighty thousand, it's just solely on this one particular-
Right.
Person, person who's buying it, right? So it's the three eighty. And, and, and our legal says, yeah, if somebody, if the three members on this board still want to pursue the sale of Tomback and put it back on sale, we can't, they can't.
Right, but it's still subject to the same, same public, same process, right?
We never can tell.
Right.
Okay, so that's the way the law is, that's the way the law is. And as I said before, this is what your counsel told you, this is what you have to be reading, and this is what has to be reading, why are we being second guessing our attorney?
Well, that's it.
Well, because now there's a discrepancy, you brought up a discrepancy, because when we, when Scott looks at, you know, actually, I think it's a good idea just to get it over with.
Yeah, just so we know we have no problems when we have the whole thing.
You brought up a question, so there's interpretation that we just want to make clear, and make sure that the attorney says, okay, regardless of where the petition is written, we can move forward.
We don't want to have a problem either way.
No, no. It means we're going to ask our counsel to look at the wording of the petition, and make sure that there's no issue.
Resolution's fine.
Right.
Well, resolution's not fine, it's not-
No, it's the, it's the-
The resolution should be absolutely fine.
It's the petition, it's the petitions that aren't, are not worded, questioned.
Petitions aren't worded.
Did we get a cost of the special election, was it a cost?
Yes.
Did we get, excuse me?
The cost of the special election.
Yeah, I think Colleen's been checking, and it's around five grand, I asked her the other day.
Five thousand seven hundred dollars.
Five thousand seven hundred bucks. So, I mean, that gives up, that gives, so if we pass this resolution and there's a problem, how do we solve that problem?
Well, we have to, we'll have to bring it up. If there's a problem, we'll have to confront it, we'll see what the problem is, and go forward.
Okay. These guys weren't involved, yes, to sell it again if it's voting no.
I can't answer that question, can't answer that question, no. Come on.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mick. So, Supervisor Report, October twenty eighteen, Budget Workshop Meeting with Budget Director Chris Wilco, Councilman Corcoran, met with Marlborough School District Rep Larry Cavazza and Councilman Corcoran to discuss availability of the district sites for recreation purposes. Met with Mr. and Mrs. Cool to discuss a civil matter. Met with Jordan Heller from Timber Green to discuss town-owned property that could be logged. Oh, by the way, just so you know, when I sent it to Rebecca Volk, and I should have known this, because it's, one of the properties is at the park, and we received grants for the park. You have to go through this alienation thing, which is a long process to get the legislature in the state to overturn it, so you could do something like that. So I just told him, just cut them out, cut the timber thing out, it wasn't that much, it wasn't worth the bother.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, at the park?
At the park.
Just the park?
Yeah, just the park. We had a meeting with Mobile Life Rep Scott Woosley, who will be here to have a presentation at the next meeting, and Councilman Corcoran to discuss budget items. The increase of that was three percent, correct, Scott?
What's that?
Mobile Life?
Two percent, right?
No, it's three.
Three this year, because he had a, yeah.
Yeah.
He held it till last year.
Various meetings with Department Heads and Budget Director Chris Wilco and Councilman Corcoran to discuss preparation of the budget items. Meeting with Milton Landing, representatives from CSX, New York State DOT, Councilman Baker, Milton Landing Rep Gail Appeler Jr. to discuss at Great Crossing. A meeting with the New York State Comptroller's Office, representing the Budget Director Chris Wilco, to go over ordered items. A meeting at the Milton Train Station with Bham, Planning Representative, Councilman Baker, Highway Superintendent Gail Appeler, and community members to discuss Milton Train Station Park Development Ideas with the Bham Associate. Follow-up meeting with Department Heads and Budget Director Chris Wilco and Councilman Corcoran to finalize budget numbers. Met with Mickey Jamal and Councilman Corcoran to discuss Chestnut Petroleum Project. Basically, that was, the ask on that meeting was to have Senator Larkin and DOT Director at a meeting with Chestnut Petroleum, myself, and whoever could make it at that time, when that meeting is finalized, I sent the ask to Senator Larkin's office. So basically, it's a DOT situation where they're asking Chestnut Petroleum not only to put the turning lane, or the one section of lanes that they have to do, it's around eight hundred feet, and go up to the west side where nine W is, but DOT is suggesting, and this is what they've been doing, that the applicant has to do not only part of the west side, but also the east side. So basically, that eight hundred feet of nine W has to be reclaimed and repaved. Now, which might, they assume it's a cost of three hundred and some thousand. Anyhow, we'll see what happens with that. Met with Highway Superintendent Gail Appeler and Steve Bianco at Clowat Chance Park to discuss drainage issue on the Upper South Ball Field. Attended Elster County Association of Supervisors Meeting. Attended Milton Train Station Foundation Function honoring the realibitation of the train station. Attended Sarah Holick Open House for memory of Pat Russo. Respectfully out, it's a supervisor, moving right along. Tom?
Building Department. Building Inspector's Monthly Report, September two thousand eighteen. Certificate of Occupancies for, request for information thirteen. Fire inspections fifteen, fire calls one, stop work orders three, order to remedy sixteen, complaints thirty-eight, burn permits issued eighteen, total building permits thirty-seven. One one-family, seven electrical, two tank removals, two stoves, three pools, five sheds, four roofs, five addition, five decks, one wireless communication, one carport, one solar panel. Estimated cost of building, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Total monthly receipt, certificate of occupancy, seven hundred, request for information, thirteen hundred. Building permits, six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Fire inspection fees, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And burn permits, eighty dollars, for a total monthly receipt of nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Total miles, ten thirty-two, with total gas uses of eighty-eight gallons.
Any questions for Tom? Building is starting to pick up?
Yep, we had a good summer, it was a pretty busy summer. New house construction was up, spec building is up, you know, for builders' building spec. So it was all up.
Good.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
Would you like to read the police?
Sure.
Okay. Police, motor vehicle accidents, September of eighteen. Three personal injury, twelve property damage, five report not required. Summons is issued, ninety, vehicle in traffic, five parking. Complaint activity, total blotter entries, three hundred and twenty-seven, total arrests, twenty. Telephone calls, sixteen sixty-two, full-time overtime, C attached. Full-time overtime grant, overtime C attached, part-time overtime C attached. I'll go down to full-time dispatchers, overtime twenty-four, for six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Part-time dispatchers, zero. And that's it, police mileage, twelve thousand, two hundred and thirty-two. And I can't answer any of these questions, if you have to ask me.
Eddie, how come the deer line? We're like three thousand dollars over budget so far.
I can't answer that question, I'll have to defer to the police.
I know a lot of his stuff comes in at towards certain times of the year.
Yep.
When he gets stuff for the kids, so, it's probably that.
All right, Alan, right?
Very good.
And they did a great job the other day, by the way, Police Department for the Community Day, yeah, they did a-
And this was in cold, highway department, too.
They all did, all of the parts.
All right, this is the Highway Superintendent Report, the month report for September two thousand eighteen. Under Roads, he rates, the majority of the work this month was on a sidewalk project in Marlborough. We had finished the concrete work on Grand Street and moved to West Street. We restored the lawns behind the sidewalks on Grand Street and applied seaguard straw. Blacktopped the road cut up to the front of the sidewalk with hot asphalt. We completed the work on West Street for this year and will finish this next year. We milled out and repaved sections on Hampton Road. Drainage, started our pipe project on Old Indian Road, we'll be putting in thirteen hundred feet, thirteen hundred plus feet of fifteen-inch PVC with catch basins to close in this ditch line. This is due to a heavy truck traffic and the dangerous deep ditch. There's a lot of rock outcropping, so we anticipated it will take a while to get this done. Fuel usage, gas, two hundred and eighty-two point seven two-nine gallons, diesel, three hundred and ninety-seven point eight-five-three gallons, respectfully submitted, Gail Appeler Senior.
Thank you, Alan.
That PVC pipe project that he did really did make that road a lot safer. Because that's where, right there on that edge, when you could pass Hudson River Fruit, there was, the truck would be coming up, and you were so close to that ditch a couple of times, I thought I'd go in, you know?
Al, the sidewalks look great, do you know when they're gonna finish those pieces under the utility poles?
So, yeah, so Verizon had finished that last week, and I talked to Gail, he's gonna try to get it to it before it freezes. So he wants to complete that before then, so maybe next week, if the weather breaks a little bit, he'll probably get to that.
Okay.
Also, just would like the board to know that we're at the final stages for the grants for one and two for nine W sewer. I received both grants the other day, the final stage, where the attorney looks at the grant and on his letterhead does this template, you know? So I just finished that and mailed that off, so we're good for the nine W quarter in, starting in the spring. Dennis Larios is continuing with the design and with the permits, so we're in good shape as far as the nine W first phase of it, and also the second phase.
Good question, good, I should have, I could ask you the other day. But let's just say Chestnut, for whatever reason, can't resolve this issue with DOT and whatever, and we extend that line, we're extending it to them for the first phase, right?
Yeah, and that, D and J, yeah.
Couple others are adding on, but at that point, they're gonna have to still pay for a hookup of some kind, no matter what they do.
Yeah, that's the sewer district, correct?
Yeah, it'll be a sewer district.
Yeah, it goes right in front of the store there.
I mean, because we got this money specifically for-
That's in our code, right, Charlie?
For this, I hope it, yeah.
Yeah, still trying to get it to town.
Hopefully, things will work out, and they won't walk away from the project. But, you know, as far as the town, I think we all could agree that we've just went, we've gone-
Way above the beyond.
Yeah, way above what we, what most towns would, because we're business friendly, and we like to see this in our community. So, that being said, everything that the town has done, that Planning Board passed six, seven months ago, we've been having dialogues with different things, now we're gonna go see Senator Larkin, we got the nine W sewer to Chestnut Petroleum, so the town is, they have done their due diligence. So nobody can say, whatever happens, it was the town's fault. Moving on?
They will.
They will. Thank you, Eddie. Water Superintendent, Charlie Magial.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Monthly report for September, water consumption totaled fourteen point eight million gallons, which is a daily usage of four hundred and ninety-four thousand a day. Compared to last month, we had fifteen point seven million gallons, which is a daily usage of five hundred and eight thousand. Compared to a year ago, was thirteen point nine million, which is a daily usage of four hundred and sixty-six thousand gallons a day. Water mains, we had to repair a ten-inch water main on Milton Turnpike. Service lines, we had to repair service line on Maple Avenue. Valves, we had to repair valves on Mahoney Road and nine W. Meters, we had to replace three stuck meters. Billing, bills went out. If there's any other problems, feel free to give us a call. At the pump house, we painted the interior of the pump house. At the reservoir, we had to clean up trees at the entranceway into the reservoir. Service line inspections, two, closings, four. We had fifty-five markouts, gallons of gas, two hundred and sixty-five, gallons of diesel, thirty. And the mileage for the month was twenty-one hundred miles.
I got two questions.
Hope I have two answers.
First one is, me and Al had met with Tony Falco down at the sewer plant a couple of weeks back, and one of his questions, I don't know if Al brought this up or not, but-
I have it.
He asked us if you were inclined to maybe want to sell or rent the old pump house at the top of the hill, right behind, by his parking lot. Do you utilize it enough where, you use it a lot?
We do, we're in there at least twice a week. We take water samples out of there, we also, we use it for storage.
All right, just ask him, because he did, it was something that he asked us, and we saw revenue signs in our eyes, so we were like, yeah.
Actually, I did, so.
I did, I did.
I don't want to sell anything.
I didn't know what we used it for, so I didn't know if we actually still used it or not.
No, there's stuff in there that-
And the other question I had was, have you heard any follow-up from Newburgh on what they're doing with the, down there in Newburgh?
Right now, they said that their reservoir is more than capacity, but-
This is the city of Newburgh.
The city, but they still came over and still, they got prepared in the event of they have to get water from us.
Yeah, because they had a lot of rain, so they're good right now.
They're kind of satisfied, so, the water was turned off, they shut down the Delaware a week ago, about.
They're draining it right now.
And, they're waiting.
So they only need that in case of an emergency, but right now, they're good, so.
It's a six-week process, so maybe if, they are, they are prepared.
Where did we leave, we had a discussion about possible improvements to the water system.
We left off at-
Milton Turnpike or now maybe over on Crossroads, so where did we leave that?
We left off at Crossroads, there's three hundred feet of pipe from one end of Crossroads, from South Road, all the way to Platicille Road, it's about three hundred and twenty-five feet.
Okay, that you would like to replace?
In the event that we did go that way, also, there's three hundred feet of coming down Platicille Road from Bellissimo to Crossroad and Platicille Road. That's going down Platicille. So where your decision stands is whether you want the water to come up Crossroad or travel on Platicille Road.
Okay, do we have a, are you asking us to make a decision? I don't know what, were you gonna outline some costs for us, or?
The cost is probably the same, it's where we were gonna go.
And what's your, do you have a recommendation and the cost?
I recommended that we go down Platicille, because at the time, it was, it's all set up for it. But Crossroad, you were planning to run water for other various reasons.
Yeah, we're not doing that, right, so.
Could you give us a price in coming down Platicille?
Sure. We could decide on that.
So coming down Platicille, so this will help so the school won't get shut off in case if something happens, or no? It's still gonna happen, it's gonna complete the loop that we need?
The school will eventual, they'll get shut off no matter what, if something happens on Platicille Road.
Right, because that is Platicille, I mean, so how do we ever prevent where if there's an issue that we could, that the school-
Well, they only have one source of coming, of water coming into the school, and that's by the entrance that's on Platicille Road, that's where the water comes in.
But won't this loop it?
It'll loop it.
If there's a problem on Eastern Platicille, we can come in from the other direction, come in from the west.
If there's a water main break like on Jackson Avenue, or before, there'll be a problem at the school.
Now, unless we loop it.
If we loop it, there won't be a problem.
There won't be a problem, that's what we're trying to avoid, is avoiding the problem.
Even with the Platicille, Platicille Road looping it, that would alleviate the problem that we're talking about?
That would alleviate a problem of water.
Okay, so, so I guess, so I guess we're asking you to-
Is there any indication that there would be new people that would-
If we go down Platic- If we go down Platicille Road, there's two residents that have approached me, but they're on the west side of the road.
Hmm.
So they'd have to cross, we'd have to cross the county road, but they've been asking for water.
So you wouldn't come down Crossroads or at all?
Crossroads, you'd only be gaining...
Crossroads was like three thousand feet, too, wasn't it? It wasn't more than three hundred feet we had to come down to get to the school. It's a lot more than three hundred feet there.
I think it was just three hundred. It was a hundred and seventy-five to the ball field, and then it's another hundred or two hundred.
Seems short tonight. I just think it's short.
I don't know if it'd be, money-wise, if that would be a good thing to do. Why don't you find out the numbers for us?
Looping the system's good for us. It benefits the system in a lot of different ways.
So we're asking Charlie to give an estimate?
Protect the school in case of this emergency, we have to loop the pipe.
Okay.
And if there's any people along the way that might be able to be, is that in the water district? I assume it is, right?
Yeah, it is in the water district.
Yeah.
So I guess, are we asking Charlie for estimates on both proposals, or just the Platicille Road?
I think that last time, during the meeting, we decided that we would concentrate on the school in that area, even though the recreation center was, the proposal of the recreation center was going to be there and the school doesn't want, they don't, they declined to give us that or lease us or municipal agreement with that land. I think it's still advantageous to see what would, what the price would be to have it looped so this way the school is. It might be, you know, it might be that we can't afford it, just for those two people or for the school. But we should know what the numbers should be.
All right.
All right, I'm not clear what we're asking him to do now. Are you, are you clear, Charlie?
It's the one that's on...
On Crossroad or Platicille Road?
Platicille.
Platicille, okay.
The one down Platicille is already, I mean, we already have two valves that are there, so all we need is the main connection and a few valves to isolate it, so.
I think it made sense with Crossroad if the school was in agreement for the...
Yeah, that was, I think if they're going to do something there, the municipal building, then it makes sense.
Okay, so Charlie, in my next meeting, you'll have an estimate to us, right?
You will.
All right, thanks.
Colleen?
Hello?
Town clerk, monthly report, September two thousand nineteen. Burn permits, one for thirty dollars. Conservation, seventeen for two hundred and forty-three, twelve. Dog licenses, twenty-five, for a total of a hundred and forty-five dollars. Transfer station permits, two for sixty dollars. Punch cards, thirty-two for two thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Marriage licenses, two for thirty-five dollars. Building permit, building department fees, one for eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Fire fees, one for eight hundred dollars. Zumba, one for a hundred and fifty dollars. Accident reports, seven for thirty-five dollars. Certified copies, three for two hundred and twenty dollars. Fore requests, one for two dollars. Park fees, two for six hundred dollars. Boot camp, one for six hundred dollars. Jiu-jitsu, one for a hundred and fifty dollars. For a grand total of fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and twelve cents.
Any questions for Colleen? Get two questions for Colleen?
No, I question her.
Thank you, Colleen. Okay. You know, the water quality management, actually, it's Julian Falco took that over from his father. Yeah, so he's in the business now. Report on the Marlborough wastewater treatment plant for September twenty eighteen. The average flow meter reading to the plant was a hundred and nineteen thousand gallons per day. Design capacity is a hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons per day. We use sixty-eight percent of the capacity. The process is meeting all other speedies requirements. Lab results show that we removed ninety-nine percent of the BOD and ninety-nine percent of suspended solids during the month. The Milton wastewater treatment plant and average flow to the Milton plant during August twenty eighteen was thirty-one thousand gallons per day. This is about fifty-six percent of the designed capacity, fifty-five gallons per day. We showed ninety-nine percent of the BOD and ninety-eight percent TSSF removal. Process is working well, meeting speedies requirements. Overall, both wastewater treatment plants are in good working order but getting old. The collection system is being monitored and maintained by Charlie Magial and the water department. If you need any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Actually, Councilman Corcoran mentioned that we met Tony and, we met Tony and he told us the different things that he needed down at the Marlborough sewer plant to bring it up to date, to increase it, and I didn't get a formal written thing, but there was quite a bit, and he is right, the plant is getting old, so we will have to start addressing some of his concerns.
He's going to give us something in writing?
Yeah, I learned a lot, took a lot of pictures of different pieces of equipment and, you know, it is old and...
It's expensive stuff, though.
Yeah, it's expensive.
It's just cheap anymore. His main thing was that main line, right, Al?
Yeah, coming off of the Dock Road.
Coming off of Dock Road, you know the one he's talking about, Charlie? Comes off Dock Road, feeds, that's the main feed into the plant? He says that he thinks needs to be replaced, it needs to be bigger.
Mm-hmm.
And then it goes into that machine that grinds everything up and wants to replace that, then there's a screw machine, wants to replace that.
So Al and I are going to a meeting tomorrow, thinking to tell us how to get money for all this stuff.
That's a...
On a lot cheaper note, the trees that we had cut down, down here in Milton, behind that plant, there's cotopus starting to grow back there now. It's a pretty fast growing tree, but they're manageable now, like, I don't know if the water department or highway department can get in there and whack them. There's like maybe five of them.
That's down in Milton...
Behind the plant. We had a, a couple of years ago, I got them, come in and clean all the trees out that were growing over top of the building.
Yeah, with big trees.
They're doing it again. So before they get, before it's unmanageable, we have to call a tree company. Can we get a couple guys in there and just whack them down?
While they're small.
While they're small? No, 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 they're away from the building, they're probably, they're probably five, six inches around. They're on the west side of the building, on the bank, going up the bank. So, but they're already starting to, they're on the bank, but they're already starting to get above the roof.
Is that something that's in the Milton train station park?
No.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, yeah, it's there, it's the town property.
Okay, well, I mean, it's all town property. I mean, it's not part of their...
Yeah, no, it's just...
You know, because of the trail that's coming down.
They're just scrub trees now, they're just, it's unusable.
No, I mean, it's something that we're going to have to do...
It's not, no, no, it's right behind, it's right behind the plant.
Okay.
Are you asking Charlie to take a look at it?
I'm asking somebody to take them down. Can you take them down, Charlie?
Charlie, can you take a look at it?
Can you take a look? That's all. Okay.
Yeah, Apple has the chipper.
Leave them, just leave them on the bank.
If you bring it up to the transfer station, don't only do it in a pickup truck.
Guys, I don't think they need to be hauled out, just drop them.
Come up there in a big town...
Charlie, just drop them.
Dump truck. Larry will say, "Get out of here."
Yeah, I think Gail did it last time.
No, we're in the tree service.
Did any call the tree service?
Yeah.
No, we actually did.
But they were pretty big.
We bid it last time.
Got to ask somebody here.
Okay.
You've got a lot of assignments here, Charlie, I don't know if you're ever going to come back here again or not.
Door control, hmm, I got it. Hundred percent. Monthly report, received a total of twenty-two calls this month, including eleven calls to service from Marlborough PD, state police, and Ulster County Sheriff. We responded to six active complaints and/or cases which are now closed or resolved. We currently have two open cases that have been addressed but are ongoing or unresolved. We impounded two stray dogs this month. Parents' ticket, tickets were issued this month on two town code violations and three agriculture and market violations. We currently have zero dogs in the kennel. We had one dog bite reported this month. The dog bite resulted in some of, some of the appearance tickets referenced above in the report. I think talking to Andrew, when we talked to him, there was an incident down at the park, Dog Park, where two pit bulls were entering one dog and her lady were leaving, and it wasn't a happy meeting. And I guess the lady tried to break it up. There was no skin broke, so I don't know what occurred, but I'm assuming that this is what the dog bite was about.
Yeah, and we're going to, he wanted us to put up a sign to say...
Yeah, what did he want?
I don't remember. We'll have to go back and ask him.
I'll have to call him.
Something about, please leash your dogs.
Well, we have a leash law in town.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, it was something...
I think it's something to do with actually, either if there's a problem to call him or the police.
You asked him to send you an email specifically what you wanted?
Yeah, I haven't received that.
Okay.
Okay. Assessor, do you want to read that in?
Assessor's report. Our office has processed nineteen real property sale transfers, worked on five property tax estimates, verified the sales records for the month. Our data collector has been working around the Conklin Hill, Latentown Road, Gaylor Lane, Milton Turnpike area. We sent out our renewal applications for our star exemptions and our senior citizen exemptions last week. All other exemption paperwork was also sent out previously. The New York State Department of Tax and Finance has changed the file requirements for the star exemption renewals, and it is now mandatory that all recipients complete an income verification form, four twenty-five dash IVP, along with their star renewal form, four twenty-five dash RNW. Senior citizen exemption recipients must also complete a form known now as well, four sixty-seven RNW, along with the accompanying documentation. So we've got a lot more paperwork.
Planning board review, September two thousand eighteen. Meeting September fourth, two thousand eighteen was canceled. Meeting on September seventeenth, two thousand eighteen was attended by Chris Brand, Manny Cacci, Steve Clark, Cindy Lanzetta, Ben Trapani, Joel Trunkali. First item on the agenda was Kevin and Kelly Casey, the public hearing for a subdivision. Public hearing for this project was opened and closed with limited public participation, a secret or negative declaration, and notice of determination on non-significance was approved via resolution. Resolution of approval was also granted. Next item on the agenda was Marlborough and Hudson, Hudson Circle, public hearing for site plan. The public hearing was open with significant input from those in attendance, questions regarding landscaping, project history, areas of recreation, construction bonds, attorney general approval, change from two bedrooms to three bedrooms. Construction phasing and drainage were the main issues brought forth. The board agreed to adjourn the public hearing until October first, two thousand eighteen, meeting of the planning board, when the applicant will return. Third item on the agenda, Twin Pond Enterprises, was in for preliminary site plan review. The town engineer, Pat Hines, pointed out several technical discrepancies which the applicant will address. New York State DOT input and approvals were discussed. The new portion of the initial phase of screening was deemed appropriate in size. Additional screening is required. The project will be sent to the Ulster County Planning Board for review. The applicant will reappear when outstanding comments from the aforementioned agencies are complete. Special note, Chairman Brand advised all members to review the proposed changes to the town zoning law. The town board will hold a public hearing on this proposal on September twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen. Next deadline is February Friday, September twenty-first. Next scheduled meeting is Monday, October first. Respectfully submitted, Chris Brand, Chairman, Town and Marlborough Planning Board.
Thank you very much, Howard.
You're welcome.
Report of the committees, Recreation Committee? They had the bounty fest, right? I think that was very successful, and so, do you have any, I didn't go, I was away.
What are we doing for Halloween? We doing the...
Yeah, we have the, we have a lot of things going. We had the trunk of tree.
Mm-hmm.
Right, what's it, three to five? And then we have Milton. When's your...
Milton's the, everyone should be meeting at the library around quarter to four, step off, be around four o'clock, and march over to the firehouse.
Okay. And also, Sheila has the trick or treat through to Town and Marlborough.
She's doing that three to five, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, so I mean, if people want to show up to the parade, do the parade thing and bounce over to...
Yeah, go to trunk or tree.
Or vice versa, whatever.
And the trunk or treats at the elementary school?
It is, it's in the back this year, and you could park in the regular, the front parking.
In the back, okay.
Yeah, just for safety reasons. Last year, we, well, it was an unusual warm day, so we got a lot of people, so...
Yeah, we did, too.
Yeah.
Unbelievable, yeah.
Well, and this year, I think a lot of people are participating, it should be fun. I know every year, my family's into it. Emergency, emergency management preparedness committee?
Nothing new.
Nothing going on there? I know the conservation advisory committee, we send the suggested design guidelines up to the county, we haven't heard anything. Matt Kirsten has been very involved with us at the CAC. We've got a bunch of pictures, I have to format them, and hopefully, the end of this year, we'll be done with that. IT committee, as you can see, the little green...
Blue.
Blue, I'm sorry. They did blue, I'm, not only am I going deaf, I'm getting blind here. Blue squares, that's where the TV is going to be, it's actually an eighty diagonal, eighty inch diagonal, so it's going to be great. We're all going to have notebooks up here, so we're trying to go paperless, and we'll see how that works out with Ed. He's, he's doing pretty good these days, so...
I'm paperless, I'm paperless.
And we get little Chromebooks and everything, so this will be especially good for, I think, not only the town board, but for the planning board, so people could see what's happening during public hearings. I think Tina is going to meet with Joel and a bunch of people to format, so this way, the format to Jack George is going to be electronically, they've been having problems with that, so they're going to meet with that. We did have to buy two, two computers, one for the assessor's office for Mike, the new gentleman, and one for, I believe, Chris, your computer went bad. So that's what I have in IT, I think everything else is running pretty good. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, Milton Train Station Foundation, we had a festive event Saturday. We invited Senator Larkin, unfortunately, Senator Larkin had a debt in the family, so he couldn't be there, and, but it went very well. It was to honor all the people that gave money to the foundation, and that was quite a bit of money, and Mark Reynolds was there, I hope he does a nice story on it. Anyhow, it was very good, it was well-attended, and Mr. Baker was there also. Milton Landing Citizens Committee?
Nope, it was good.
I could say one thing about the Milton Landing, is there's a resolution for the at grade crossing, and this is to inform CSX that we're looking from Article ninety and ninety-one. I think Article ninety is to bring up to standards an existing crossing, and ninety-one is for a proposed new crossing. So I've been on the phone with Donna Hints from the DOT up in Albany, and she's been guiding me through the process. It's a long process, but it seems that the director, Cliff Thompson, thinks it's, we should go through it, so I'm going to go through it. Marlborough Hamlet Economic Development Committee, Howard, you attended that?
Yes, we had a meeting last week, I believe it was, at John DiMarco's office in the evening, and there were five or six of us there, sort of, it'd been a while since we met, and we kind of put together a list of accomplishments and a list of things that we want to work on going forward, so I think John's going to put that together, and I'll circulate that once I get that. I wanted to mention that you and I are, Al, are meeting with the Catholic Church on...
Far to town.
Wednesday, I believe.
It is.
Talk about the parking lot situation, St. Mary's parking lot, and how we can work together on that. I wanted to, you guys, I think I sent you the email about the nine W study, so it's complete. It's waiting comments, and most of the comments on this will come from the DOT, I would assume.
Yep.
So, once they get comments, I think they'll schedule another meeting to review those comments, but I think I did send this to all of you guys. If not, let me know.
I think I got it.
There was a link, it's a link to a.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I wanted to mention that, sort of related to the L W R P, we did have the scenic resource inventory done by the Cornell students last weekend. They spent all day Saturday going through the entire town of Marlboro. Matt Kirstad and myself accompanied them in a van, professor and six students. And the next day, on Sunday, they presented what they found, what they thought of the town, they were very impressed with the natural beauty of the town. At the train station, gave a presentation, about twenty people attended, so that was good. They will come back in December and give a final report on their findings, and basically what they're trying to do is develop a listing of all the scenic vistas we have in town that at some point in time may be protected in some way or fashion. So we'll see what their recommendations are. But it was very, they also did Town of Lloyd, and they did a little bit of work in Poughkeepsie, and the point of all this is to develop a procedure or a process that other towns can use down the road to do their own work in terms of scenic inventory, so it was very interesting.
Thank you, Howard, thank you, Matt, for doing that.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, Matt, you know, Matt was in heaven, so that was great.
I'm sure he was.
Yep.
Meeting Marlboro, I have anything except they had the bounty festival. Milton, Hamlet or Milton Association Committee?
They just put some Mums up and stuff like that, so that's about it.
We just, we had a little talk with, about Transfer Station Review Committee. Have you met, or you're gonna meet soon, Howard?
Transfer Station Review, no, nothing to report. I wanna reiterate what Larry said, Gail did a great job of fixing that issue we had with near the newspaper bin, so thanks to Gail, but he's not here.
Just to let you know, Tim Rose is gonna be at the next supervisors' meeting, so I'll let you know in.
Yep.
Yeah, he's coming up with a bunch of stuff.
I don't think they increased their rates at all for two thousand nineteen, is that right?
I don't think so either.
No.
Okay, so we're moving to new business. As you know, I think November twelfth meeting is a holiday. We usually have it, and usually borrow the recorder from Colleen, so what do you think, you guys think we should have it? I think we should, we've been doing it, so.
Stick with it.
Okay. Okay, and now, new business, we have Cornerstone Estimate for special election postcard. So this would go out to bulk mailing to everyone, household, and you got the price, Scott got a price for fifteen.
Oh, they got it, I didn't get it.
Colleen?
Yeah.
Got it from Cornerstone, it's fifteen hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-five And actually, it would state time, place, and actually, the, what the referendum is about, so there's no other things come, you know, as far as, you know, the board's opinion on each, huh?
I think it'd be just like, almost like what you're voting on, right?
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Yeah, it's a cesspool.
It's a lot of money.
Can't put a price on democracy.
Fifteen sixty-seven ninety-five. Make a motion, somebody's gonna make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I mean, I have a hard time with this one, so as long as it.
Gotta notify the public, right?
No, you got lots of ways to notify the public, so I don't, you know, we live in an age of social media, so I'm not sure what we need to do.
I wanna make sure that everybody gets the, gets the postcard, so I'm gonna vote yes, so that's four yeses and one nay.
You know, libraries.
Everybody, so motion approved. So that's fifteen, I just say that when we do the postcard, to send it out before we, what it looks like for the rest of the board to see.
Oh, yeah.
So there's no way you do it as far as what it says.
Why we can't say what?
Gotcha. Or shop topic, there's none here, but, so, I'd just like to propose something to the board. You know, since the denial by the Board of Education for that property to have a community slash rec center, a couple of, and I know Scott talked to the seniors too, but I don't know what happened there, but talking to a few seniors, I get the feeling it's not the location where they're at, I think it's the housing, the Presbyterian down below. And I was thinking, they like to go there, it's central to their driving. I was just wondering if the board would be interested, I know this is what I'm proposing, to talk to the Presbyterian Church to maybe come up with some agreement as far as upgrading that facility, and coming up with a, some kind of lease agreement with them to use their facilities for the seniors. So I'm talking about maybe, you know, redoing the floors, the ceilings, whatever it is, we have money in the building department, and if we could just meet with them, have a committee, a couple people, maybe myself and Ed, and maybe the people from the Presbyterian Church to work this all out, I think it could be a win-win situation for the seniors and for the church and for the town. It could only, it could maybe be used even for other functions besides the seniors. The problem with the seniors is they, they need the tables and the chairs set up for their bingles and stuff like that, so to knock them down, put them up, this is really conducive for them, and, so I was thinking, what you thought about that? We pay seven thousand dollars now a year for rent, basically, it's, there's no lease agreement or anything, it's just known. So I thought maybe myself and Ed and the committee on the church side could come together and see if we could make this feasible.
I mean, I kinda have to recuse myself a little bit, but it is a opportune time to talk to the church, 'cause we are thinking of selling, we are moving forward on selling the Mance building on the corner of Bloom Street and West Street, yeah.
With the house?
The house.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so, I think it's a good time to talk to the church.
What are they selling it for?
Don't know yet. You mean, how much are we selling it for?
Yeah.
We just got the go-ahead from the congregation yesterday to look into it, so we don't know yet.
So, basically, if we're, you know, if we're trying to find a place for the seniors, and we've been looking all over, and we had this discussion for four years, three years when I'm on the board, I think it'd be a win-win situation for the seniors and for the Town of Marlboro and for the church.
I mean, I agree with you.
Couple of people say, you know, what makes you think that we wanna travel all the way up to, by the high school or anyplace else, you know? That's just a couple of the seniors, but.
I mean, the seniors do like it there, as far as the location, and I think we've always tried to be cognizant of that, we tried, I mean, I didn't think the high school's that far, that's why we kinda looked in that area, rather than up in this area. The only issue I have with that is that, I'm not, it's like putting money into someone else's building and then.
Scott, look around.
Yeah, but we don't, but this was, but this is a long, long-term lease, I mean, this was a difference.
The lease could be the same thing, it could be twenty-year lease, ten-year lease.
Yeah, then, I mean, if we're giving them seven thousand dollars a year, whatever the tot, what's that?
It's a thousand, excuse me.
How much are we giving them a year now?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand, so yeah, I mean, if, just saying it won't, if it comes out to seventy thousand dollars to upgrade the building, that's ten-year lease.
I mean, that's, wherever we have to do, I mean, it's gonna be a lot of money to do a new rec center, cross recreation center, or if it goes down at the Tomback Building, don't wanna be sold, that could always become a rec center, but I'm just, we're always looking at the seniors and what we can do for the seniors, because, and, you know, I might be wrong in this, and we don't have a place for a rec center again, so we're back in square one, the price is way too high for most of the board members, so I'm just thinking out of the box, by the timeframe and everything happens, it's gonna be a while before we have anything for the seniors, and this is like something that's saying, yeah, we appreciate the seniors, the taxpayers of Marlboro, and we're gonna do something, we could arrange something with the Presbyterian Church, so they win, we win, everybody wins. They stay in the same place, they could park, they like that place. They don't like the facility.
Parking's part of the problem.
And we could do something with parking, because you could look at the, by, I looked at it tonight.
So there's no possible, there's no possible way to use that member item money for something like that?
There is.
Well, that's a different story. I mean, if we could use member item for item money.
We could use the member item two fifty or any portion of it for something that we could lease for ten years, we can't do the long-term lease, but we could lease for ten years on a ten-year basis, we could use that money for that. All I'm saying is, I don't know what it takes, Scott, to really.
I always want, that's the main reason, my, big thing is, we've been, like you said, three, four years, we've been trying to figure out how to get them a place that, I know Howard knows this, they always complain about the heat or the air conditioning, or it's breezy, or the ceilings are too low.
Yeah, move forward.
The lighting's not as great, you know, all that stuff. I mean, I've said it from day one, like I went there the other day to explain to them, some of the stuff that was put out there mainly was just about, you know, a project that was gonna cost a lot of money and that wasn't gonna happen, and it was never gonna happen at that cost, you know, I just wanted to make sure they understood that, that the board was never gonna approve something of that nature. But we still wanna make sure that they have a place that's nice and comfortable.
I agree with you.
But I mean, if it's a member item money that we could use, and it's something of a lease, long-term lease, and as long as we don't have to raise taxes, I think that's a good thing.
No, it doesn't.
Start, start the dialogue out.
Howard, do you see that they're not looking to sell the building or anything there for you, Charlie?
No.
The church.
Church I'm talking about.
Again, I don't think I'm telling tales out of school here, but if we were to sell the Mance, and that, whatever money we get from the Mance, we can't really put that back into buildings or property, it has to be set aside, basically, to pay the salary of the minister. There's something called the housing allowance, it's part of their salary, so that money has to go towards that housing allowance.
No, that's not, I'm saying, you don't see them selling the churches though.
Right, well, being able to do that, sell that building and be able to pay that housing allowance for maybe another ten years will allow us to have a minister for another ten years, I mean, that's kinda the way we're looking at it.
Right.
I mean, our, you know, congregation continues to shrink, and.
Did it consider the thing I was, I was talking to you about?
No, well, no, but that's, not seriously, but you know, that's something that.
That's something.
Yeah, I mean, we work very closely with the Highland Presbyterian, Presbyterian Church, we're looking at combining services at times, we already, we've been yoked with them for fifty years, we share a minister, but it's getting to the point where, you know, we have these three buildings that we can't adequately maintain, it's pretty obvious, and the fellowship hall where the seniors are, we'd love to fix that up, but we have to pay our minister first, and that's.
Let's start, let's open up the conversation, yeah, I think it's good.
Because I heard the talk.
That's what I'm saying, is I need, I want your.
Please know that I didn't bring this up, so this.
Howard, do you need an emotion?
I've been thinking about it all weekend, is, you know, we're knocking heads out, and it'll be a while now, because I don't think any of us have any idea where we're gonna put this building, if we sell Tom back, so that's the whole purpose why two of us don't wanna sell it.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
All right, I make the motion, you start the conversation with them.
Okay.
And I'll be blending with you.
Yep. The only thing I would ask too is when, yeah, I have no problem with that, is that when you talk to them about possible lease or whatever, is that are we able to rent the space out for people's parties so the town can make revenue, or are they looking to make revenue on it?
Probably can work, I mean, we could work together on that.
I mean, the thing is, if we're fixing up the facility.
I mean, the kitchen's gotta be redone too, doesn't it?
And we're putting an investment into it, is the Town of Marlboro taxpayer, the taxpayer, gonna see some kind of revenue as far as if we rent it?
Right, and so if we use member item and the two fifty from Frank, a portion of that, I'm sure.
Right, I don't think he did the whole thing.
Well, yeah, those are all the arrangements that we can make. I'm sure that the hall, I was thinking too, that hall's not used twenty-four, seven, seven days a week.
It's not, that's why, you know, we had the audit done by the group that worked for Central Hudson to see if we could upgrade the lighting, we don't use lighting enough to, you know, to make any kind of saving, didn't make sense at all. So now it sits there, it's another issue, it just sits there most of the time, except on Thursdays, and senior citizens use it.
So, I know you go to the church, but can you broker with the committee people at the church, and give us some dates that mean that it's down, so we can.
Sure, sure.
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So that motion was approved?
I need a second.
Second. Oh, I can't.
I second it.
Go on, favor?
Aye.
So moved.
I'm standing.
He's not even eyeing.
Give him a move.
That's a good idea, Al.
Let's move forward, let's go, here we go. Correspondence, is that what we're up to?
Yes.
These guys have any new business you wanna bring up?
No, we could.
Okay. Gail Appar, this is to advise you that Jerry Murtagh, is that M U R T A G H?
Murtagh.
Murtagh, holding the position as M E O in the Town of Highway Department, has completed his six-month probationary period as the October sixteen, twenty eighteen, therefore approved him as a full-time employee of the Highway Department. Welcome aboard, Jerry. As said, we did receive a letter from Marlboro Central School District, thank you for attending the Board of Education meeting last night. The presentation given about the town regarding a proposed recreation center was an item on the school board's agenda. At this time, Marlboro School District is not interested in participating with the proposed recreation center for the Town of Marlboro. We feel that school district properties should remain as-is. This allows the district to greatest flexibility in any future school needs arise, and that was from Michael Brooks. Oh, good news, I informed the board, we did receive, then the State of New York has awarded your organization, meaning the Town of Marlboro, ten thousand dollars for the proposals described in the enclosed legislative initiative form, which is the L I F. This is for ten thousand dollars for the drainage up at the Cluit Chance Park, up at the park on the south side, and myself and Gail Appar and Steve Bianco went up there and looked at what drainage possibly could be done, and we, they came with four laterals going south and north, and then one main lateral coming out to daylight to drain, so I haven't gotten that proposed from Steve, and I'll get a couple other proposals, but that's good news. Hopefully, you know, I don't know why they, well, I'd like to see them use the ball fields up there, so I don't know what the getup is, but we'll improve it and see if they come.
Yeah.
That's all we can do, and they mentioned something about the lighting, maybe we could get that going again, I guess there's a.
Brendan O'Reilly.
Yeah, I guess the baseball people didn't wanna chip in or something like that, and maybe we could help, maybe see, we could do something about that.
Where?
Bless you.
That was from Larkin's office?
That was from, thank you, Frank, and that's from Assemblyman Scartanos. About two years ago, Steve Gold called me up, and he said, Frank said to call you up to see if you needed anything in the park, and I said, yeah, drainage, and I totally forgot about it, I thought it went away, and then the other day it popped up, so thank you, Frank.
That's great.
Right. So I did receive a long letter, but I'm not gonna really go into it, and it's from Mr. Khan, and basically, it is Mr. Khan, they decided not to move that World War One memorial in front of John's place there. War One memorial in front of John's place there. They were gonna move that up to the other, so they would all be together, I guess that fell through, so, he, uh, just wants to know if we'd be, uh, consideration to make a proclamation or whatever's necessary to, uh, name that area, uh, triangle, uh, King Street and Route nine W, uh, in dedication, uh, to the World War One veterans. So, I talked to To- I'll talk to Tom Corcoran about it, see what is actually is needed.
Schroeder.
Tom Schroeder, this is Tom Corcoran over there, sorry, Tom.
You gotta do it.
Tom Schroeder. You're gonna do it? Okay.
True, it's all good.
And, uh, see if we could get that done. And like I said, I got, uh, correspondence from, uh, Scott Parker, exactly what the ask is, and he puts it in detail, and I sent that over to, I sent it to Larkin, and that has to do with the DOT. So, that's the end of this correspondence. Public comment, any public comment? Yes, Ralph?
Several meetings ago, uh, a motion was made, I think it was a motion, to pay Mr. Bell for work on this, uh, building up on Cross Road, and I believe the amount was $2,800. I might be off, maybe it was $2,500. Uh, after seeing various drawings and hearing him at the school board meeting, and it sounds like he's done tremendous amount of work, my question is, besides what was approved, do we owe him any more money on this, uh, project that now seemingly has, uh, gone away?
Uh, first of all, the board approved, the first item was twenty-five or twenty-eight hundred, and then initial, I think fifteen hundred, seventeen hundred, uh, to extend, because we changed the, uh, recreation, uh, from a stick to a, uh, a, a, a metal building, so he had to do all that, so there was an additional fee with that, I think it was above $1,500, but then we, it was ended.
Was that fifteen hundred additional approved at a board meeting?
Yes, it was.
So, that, that was with the cost, getting the cost for everything too, that was the last, the last, I think it was up to eighteen hundred.
Different topic completely. Several months ago, several meetings ago, when it was announced that state police would no longer be doing, uh, checks of trucks coming into the hamlet of Marlboro, I asked how much revenue we would be losing, uh, by the state not issuing tickets. And Police Chief Kokosa said he had no idea, because they were state, and somebody was going to go ask the court, has anybody ever asked the court how much revenue...
Well, I asked, uh, the chief, and he says it was minimal, but I didn't get exact numbers, so I'll do that.
Yeah, but the chief wouldn't know, the court wouldn't know, because they're state tickets.
I know, but I asked him, and he was, said he thought it was minimal, and he was gonna, I was gonna, I didn't pursue it, Ralph, is what I'm saying.
In other words, an answer to my question was not given.
So, in other words, I'll have that for you at the next meeting. But, once I have it, you probably won't call me and thank me like the pothole in nine W, which I got immediately fixed, which you never thanked me. It's a doubtless job, Ralph, I don't know.
If you would, if you would like to have my...
I gave $15,500, I don't know, man.
If you'd like to have my comment on that pothole, all right? Yes, it was fixed, but after two or three days of cars he, beating it down, it now needs some more fill.
He'll take care of that.
I'll take care of that. Let me, uh, let me get that revenue number for you. Any other public comments? James?
James, don't, don't forget that. Get that number. Can't be that much. James, give her a follow-up. I'd just like to say, I did thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
You did thank me for the, uh...
And I do, and I do thank you all for your, you know, you've, you've all been working at this for a very long time, so...
Thank you, James, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Oh, see, that was nice. Moving right along. We'll go to the resolution part. Uh, Resolution seventy-four, to appoint part-time police officer. Supervisor Lanzetta proposes the following, whereas the police committee has interviewed for the position for part-time police officer, and whereas it is recommended of the police committee as well as the chief of police to appoint Evan Longinuti, Longinut, is that how you pronounce it there?
Logano.
Yeah, Logano, as part-time police officer, it kinda rolls off your tongue.
Yep.
Logano. And therefore be resolved that Evan Logano be appointed effectively immediately, and polls the board. Colleen?
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Malinelli.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Supervisor Lanzetta.
Yes. Resolution seventy-five, to, uh, to appoint part-time office, police officer, whereas the police committee has interviewed the position for a part-time police officer, and whereas it is recommended of the police committee as well as the chief of police to appoint Brandon Ewing as part-time police officer. Ewing, I'll never forget, Patrick Ewing. Yeah, now, therefore be resolved that Brandon Ewing be appointed effectively, effective immediately, and moves for its adoption. Colleen?
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Malinelli.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Supervisor Lanzetta.
Yes. Uh, Resolution seventy-six, to issue a notice of special election, proposition for special election. Supervisor Lanzetta proposes the following, whereas the town board has received a petition calling for a referendum on the question of sale of the Tom Vak Building at sixteen, fifteen-twenty Route nine W, Town of Marlboro, County of Elsor, State of New York, tax map number one oh nine point one dash two dash twenty. Is this law, is, I, I could read it, I guess. Therefore, uh, whereas the town, I read that, and there, now, therefore, it is hereby resolved as follows, the town board issues the following notice of special election and proposition for special election, notice of submission of a proposition to a special election of the electors of the Town of Marlboro. The following proposition will be presented to the electors of the Town of Marlboro, Elsor County, New York, at a special election to be held on fourth day of December twenty eighteen, between the hours of noon and nine P, nine P.M., prevailing time on that day. And electors are individuals as defined within this section eighty-four of the Town Law of the State of New York. The proposition to be considered by the electors shall be the following, as follows. Should the Marlboro, should the Marlboro Town Board convey title to the so-called Tom Vak Building at fifteen-twenty Route nine W, Town of Marlboro, County of Elsor, State of New York, tax map number one oh nine point two dash two dash twenty pursuant to a contract of sale, which is subject to permissible referendum establishing a sale at price of three eighty. The polling places for the special election shall be as follows, St. Mary's Hall, seventy-three Grand Street, Marlboro, New York, one-two-five-four-two for District one, two, and three, and B, Marlboro Town Hall, twenty Milton Turnpike, Milton, New York, one-two-five-four-seven for Districts four, five, and six. Town of Marlboro by Colleen Corcoran, uh, whereon the following vote was taken to approve this, this notice and proposition. Colleen?
Supervisor Lanzetta.
Yes.
Councilman Malinelli.
Yes.
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
So, this Resolution seventy-seven is to hold a public hearing on an agreement with the Town of Marlboro and charter communication. Supervisor Lanzetta proposes the following, the Town of Marlboro contract with charter communication has expired, and whereas the charter communication has sent the town a draft agreement, and whereas a copy of the agreement is available for public inspection during normal business, and whereas the Town of Marlboro will hold a public hearing on said draft agreement, where all persons will be given an opportunity to be heard. Be resolved that the Town of Marlboro will hold a public hearing on said agreement on November twelfth, twenty eighteen, at seven P.M. And by the way, uh, the charter representative will be here to answer any questions. It moves for its adoption.
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Malinelli.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Supervisor Lanzetta.
Yes. Resolution seventy-eight, for a new at-grade pedestrian railroad crossing at Dock Road, Milton. Supervisor Lanzetta proposes the following, whereas representatives of the Town of Marlboro, New York Department of Transportation, N.Y.D.O.T., New York D.O.T., and C.S.X. have met and discussed the inadequacy of the existing at-grade railroad crossing on Dock Road, and whereas the merits of a new at-grade pedestrian crossing south of existing crossing were acknowledged to be of value to the community of Marlboro. And whereas the town is required to follow New York State Railroad Law ninety and ninety-one, be resolved that the Town of Marlboro will hold a public hearing on November twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven P.M. at the Town Hall, twenty-one Milton Turnpike, Milton, New York, at which time all interested parties may be heard. Notice of this public hearing will be given to New York D.O.T. and C.S.X., and moves for its adoption.
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Malinelli.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yep.
Supervisor Lanzetta.
Yes. Okay, Resolution seventy-nine, to introduce the local law of twenty eighteen to amend section one fifty-five dash thirty-two dash dot two of the town code solar energy. Um, basically, I can tell you what this is in a nutshell. Uh, when we did our solar code, we didn't put a provision to opt out of a pilot agreement. Since we didn't do that, the last, uh, the individuals that are proposing to put a solar farm, uh, solar farm, uh, on the turnpike, uh, in lieu of taxes, uh, we have to give them a pilot program. And so, this is in for, future reference, so this way we don't, uh, we don't miss this. Unfortunately, we didn't put it in our code, and so now, the pilot program is a given. If we implement this into our code, then we eliminate that, that, uh, that process, and we could assess them on their taxes. So, in lieu of taxes, right now, they're in a pilot program. The pilot program starts immediately, we thought we could get it, but unfortunately, if they have a contract with Central Hudson in play already, then the law kicks in, and since we didn't have this provision, uh, they are in the pilot program. I don't know what exactly what the pilot program is, I think it's per megawatt, and we'll have to see with our attorney, but they're in front of the planning board, so the pilot program would be, uh, the route that this particular solar company will be going. You want, you want me to read the whole thing again?
So, what, what this does is, makes it so they can't do that.
Yeah, they can't do that again. Instead of lieu of taxes, uh, and, and go through a pilot, they, they would have to, we would waive the pilot, and they would have to pay the taxes.
Gotcha.
Colleen?
I just need some, um, councilmen to second.
Oh, do you want me to read the notice of the public hearing?
I'll second it.
No, I just need somebody to second.
I'll second it.
Okay. I just, that's all, just for this. Okay, so, both the places, I'll put your name, Howard.
Yeah, so, this, this, uh, addendum to the solar code, uh, there will be a public hearing, a notice of public, public hearing on the twelfth.
Supervisor Lanzetta?
Yes.
Councilman Malinelli.
Yes.
Councilman Corcoran.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Koenig.
Yes.
Did you, uh, make a motion, Alan?
I did, I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, moved, adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.